Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Dan Garadnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. We're joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Cerullo, Gold on Zoom, Man, Marine on Zoom, Osorio, and Rampershead. Welcome to all of you. Before we get to today's agenda, I'd like to go over some news related to the Department of City Planning. Last month, alongside the Department of Small Business Services and the New York City Economic Development Corporation, we released the draft New York City Industrial Plan. As laid out in Local Law 172 of 2023, sponsored by City Council Majority Leader Amanda Farias, the plan is the first comprehensive framework to support the growth and success of a modern, sustainable industrial economy with good-paying jobs and thriving neighborhoods. The draft compiles considerable information on the history of the present-day conditions and the history overall of industrial businesses and neighborhoods, and lays out several strategies to help the sector succeed into the future. We will also be holding five Town Hall meetings over the next month, where New Yorkers can weigh in with their own input on the plan and the future of industry in New York. You can find the draft and the Town Hall dates at nyc.gov/industrialplan. Some big City of Yes news last week as well. Homeowners can now officially add an accessory dwelling unit to their property. Whether a backyard cottage, a basement, or an attic, ADUs are a proven housing solution across the country. And thanks to their legalization through City of Yes, we can build some much-needed new homes while also generating additional income for New Yorkers. And if you need assistance getting started, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development has a new assistance program, ADU for you, that is ready to help expedite this process. My thanks and congratulations to all of our partners across the city for their work finalizing these rules and beginning to process permit applications from New York homeowners. Moving to our agenda for today, we're going to start with an application by the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to construct a, sorry, to construct disinfection facilities for combined sewer overflows in Flushing Creek, Queens. The project, which includes a site selection and acquisition of private property and a state-owned triangular traffic median between College Point Boulevard, 32nd Avenue, and the Whitestone Expressway, as well as demapping of the traffic median, will help to significantly improve water quality in Flushing Creek, an important waterway that sits between the neighborhoods of Corona and Flushing. We'll also continue our discussion on the Creedmoor Mixed-Use Project, General Project Plan, which is located at 7925 Winchester Boulevard in Belrose, Queens. Led by New York State Empire State Development, this ambitious proposal looks to revamp the campus of the Creedmoor Psychiatric Center with new homes, community facilities, local retail, parking, a new school, and over 10 acres of passive and active open space for this community. The plan calls for the creation of over 2,000 new homes, of which more than half would be homeownership opportunities with a mix of affordable and market rate. The rest of the units would be income-restricted rentals, including those dedicated to supportive and senior housing. Today, we're going to review a letter with the Commission's recommendation that would be sent to Empire State Development. Finally, we'll hold a post-hearing discussion on the follow-up actions to the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, also known as AIMUP. This initiative, which was approved by the City Council last spring, will bring 4,600 new homes, 2,800 permanent jobs, and over $230 million in infrastructure investments to Central Brooklyn. These proposed follow-up actions fulfill a commitment made by the Department of City Planning to council members Crystal Hudson and Chi Ose during the AIMUP planning process. On a few blocks between Atlantic Avenue and Bergen Street and Grand Avenue and Franklin Avenue that are zoned for residential industrial, we would limit around half of the incentive FAR for non-residential uses to several specific uses, including light industrial, community facilities, arts, and repair uses. This change will help incentivize the light industrial and creative economies along these blocks. So with that by way of introduction, Sarah, the floor is yours. Let's get right into it.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, October 6, 2025. The time is 1:07 PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of site selections and acquisitions in a City Map Amendment in Queens Community District 7. Our presenter is Elica Edet.
Good afternoon. This is an application by the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAST, requesting a site selection and acquisition action and a City Map change action to facilitate construction of two combined sewer overflow disinfectant facilities at two separate project areas, known as TI 10 and TI 11, located in northern Queens Community District 7. These actions would allow for the construction of two new disinfectant facilities to remove pathogens from combined sewer overflows to improve the water quality of Flushing Creek, which has been harmed by discharges from CSO events. Okay, so here we have an aerial map of the surrounding area. The two proposed disinfection facilities are shown in red. The proposed TI 11 chlorination and dechlorination facility would be located to the north, and the TI 10 dechlorination facility would be located to the south, both along the eastern shoreline of Flushing Creek. As part of the Flushing Creek Long-Term Control Plan, the project includes the retrofitting of the existing Flushing Bay retention facility to allow for the addition of a chlorination facility, both of which are shown here in orange. The retention facility received CPC and Council site selection approval in the mid-1990s. The TI 10 dechlorination facility would be located on a portion of a privately-owned lot. The TI 11 chlorination and dechlorination facility would be located on a state DOT-owned traffic triangle bounded by the Whitestone Expressway, College Point Boulevard, and 32nd Avenue. The proposed facilities are bounded by the neighborhoods of Flushing to the east and Corona and East Elmhurst to the west. They are directly east of major attractions such as City Field and Flushing Meadows Corona Park. The area is served by the 7th subway line, which terminates in downtown Flushing, the Long Island Railroad, and numerous bus lines. So Flushing Creek is a waterway that flows south to north from Flushing Meadows Corona Park to the Flushing Bay and East River. There are three combined sewer overflow and five stormwater outfalls along its length as shown on the image by the red triangles. The blue area denotes areas with combined sewers. Combined sewers are sewer-conveyance systems that carry both rainwater and sewer water to wastewater treatment facilities. You can see that the locations of the proposed projects are all within areas with combined The areas shaded in purple indicate areas with separate or direct drainage systems. So currently, 60% of New York City has a combined sewer system. In areas with combined sewers, a single pipe carries stormwater runoff and sanitary sewage from buildings, from sinks and toilets, which is sent to a wastewater treatment plant. During heavy rain events, when the treatment plant's capacity hasn't exceeded, the extra combined stormwater runoff and untreated sanitary sewage are discharged directly into our local waterways through combined sewer outfalls. In this case, three CSO outfalls discharge into Flushing Creek. So as earlier stated, the Flushing Bay CSO retention facility was approved in 1993 through a site selection action. In 2005, DEP and New York State Department of Conservation entered into a consent order for CSO abatement. Following this, in 2012, the consent order was modified and a long-term control plan for Flushing Creek was prepared. Under the 2012 consent order on consent, the DEP was required to submit 11 water-body-specific long-term control plans to the state's DEC. The Flushing Creek Long-Term Control Plan is the fourth of the LTCPs to be completed under the 2012 consent order. The proposed project would be constructed to implement the recommendations outlined in the Flushing Creek CSO Long-Term Control Plan and satisfy the requirements of the CSO consent order. Again, this project would improve water quality within Flushing Creek and would complement DEP's other ongoing and planned CSO abatement projects in the Flushing Creek watershed. These projects include green infrastructure, rain gardens, stormwater, green streets, biosoils, local watershed planning programs, and construction of new and modification of existing sewer infrastructure. For the purposes of clearly describing both proposed facilities, I will be describing the existing conditions and proposal for each specific site separately. As for the proposed TI 10 facility, which is the southern site, the immediate surrounding area consists of mostly vacant or commercial and transportation uses, including parkland and vegetation, including Flushing Meadows Corona Park directly to the south. To the immediate north is the LIRR right-of-way, and the elevated Van Wyk Expressway is directly to the east, creating a separation between this site and any nearby commercial or residential This proposed facility is mapped with an M12 zoning district and an M11 district is mapped directly to the east, both of which permit light industrial uses. To the immediate north is an M31 district, which permits heavier, more noxious industrial uses and often public utilities. To the northeast, north of the LIRR tracks and east of the elevated Van Wyk Expressway, is a C2 four-zoning district, which is typically mapped in regional commercial centers. This proposed facility would be located on Block 5066 Lot 62, which is shaded in yellow. The bounds of the facility are outlined in red. Lot 62 is exceptionally large and is shaped like a highly irregular triangle with the northern portion skewed westward. Project Area 1 is outlined in yellow here, and as described earlier, is located adjacent to the elevated Van Wyk Expressway and the LIRR right-of-way. This portion of Block 5066 Lot 62 is a privately-owned 376,500 square foot roughly triangular irregular shape bounded by East Road to the west, which runs parallel to the elevated Van Wyk Expressway and curves in a westerly direction under the Van Wyk Expressway. The lot itself contains a one-story, 155,250 square foot commercial building, which is the Home Depot, on the southern end of the lot, and the rest of the lot's northern portion is used as parking space. The Home Depot is separated from the project area by a large parking area. Most of the parking lot is residual undeveloped property that has been used for construction staging for the New York State Department of Transportation. The proposed project is not expected to interfere with any nearby commercial operations. This is a view of the site looking northeast on East Road under Van Wyk Expressway. Note the existing fence and guardrail, as this area is not accessible to the public. This is a view looking northeast with fencing, vacant land, and vegetation in the foreground and the LIRR tracks in the background. So DEP proposes an approximately 27.5-foot-tall dechlorination facility totaling approximately 1,386 square feet in area, and again, would be located on the northern portion of the lot. The project area would not be accessible to the public with landscaping and an eight-foot-tall wire mesh fence restricting access. Access by DEP staff is anticipated to occur once every three months or four times a year. Vehicles would access the facility via East Road. Here, we see a north and south elevation of the proposed facility. It would be constructed near TI downfall, downfall TI 10, and accommodate the storage of sodium hypochlorite and pumping equipment. Moving on to the second proposed facility as part of this application, known as TI 11, the surrounding is a planted median owned by New York State DOT at the intersection of College Point Boulevard and the Whitestone Express Service Road. The surrounding area consists of heavy and light industrial uses, ranging from local contractors to asphalt construction facilities. This proposed facility is in an M11 zoning district with an M31 district directly west and M21 directly east. The area northwest is the special College Point District enacted in 2009 to ensure specific business park designs and to minimize impact on local residential uses. There is no official tax lot for this traffic triangle property, which is in a map street and located between Blocks 4403 and 4404. The location of the proposed facility would be the traffic triangle outlined in yellow, situated between Whitestone Expressway, College Point Boulevard, and 32nd Avenue. It is planted, and Flushing Creek is to the west. Here's a view of the project area looking northwest at the wide intersection of 32nd Avenue and College Point Boulevard. The elevated Whitestone Expressway is seen in the background. And here is a view of the project area looking southwest on Whitestone Expressway Service So the proposed facility would be approximately 33 feet tall and approximately 2,800 square feet in floor area. Vehicle access would be provided via College Point Boulevard and the Whitestone Expressway Service Road. Similar to the TI 10 facility, this facility would not be accessible to the public with landscaping and an eight-foot-tall wire mesh fence restricting access. Here are elevations of the proposed facility. It would similarly be located by the nearest downfall, TI 11. So to facilitate the construction, DEP and DCAST seek to acquire approximately 27,000 square feet of privately-owned property on Block 5066 Lot 622 and approximately 8,000 square feet of state-owned property. Construction at each of the areas would include site work, structural construction of the facilities, and construction of underground piping portions, which would occur within A City Map change is also required to eliminate this continuum and close the area of the traffic island in order for the traffic triangle to be subjected to zoning, as development is not allowed in map streets. The map change action would allow for the establishment of a new tax block and lot, and also a zoning lot to facilitate the proposed development. So in summary, the proposed site selection and acquisition action along with the City Map change would allow for the construction of two disinfectant facilities to help improve Flushing Creek's water quality. DEP predicts that during the typical season, wet weather events can release over 1 billion gallons per day of CSOs into Flushing Creek from these two target outfalls, with the project target and treatment of 98% of CSO flow that may be discharged, thereby significantly improving water quality. Thank you, happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have two acquisitions, one map change, correct?
Yes, acquisitions and acquisition and site selection.
Acquisition and site selection and a map change, okay. And one is for private lot, one is for state-owned lot.
Yes.
The private lot has dechlorination, the state-owned lot would have chlorination and dechlorination, correct?
That's correct.
And the map change takes a map street, demaps it, zones it M11, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And the, this, these facilities are active only for part of the year?
Yes, so from May 1st to October 30th.
And why is that? Why are they only active for half of the year?
So according to DEP, those are DEC standards. They said that that's the time period required to get Flushing Creek up to DEC standards, which specifically would be for contacts, so swimming. Right now, the quality level is for boating secondary, so boating and fishing only. So that's a, that's a DEC standard, basically.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I think it may be, and maybe we can check with DEP, that there is more rain fall during those months, so that's when they have the most overflows from the CSOs.
Okay, understood. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Man?
Just more curiosity, do we have a sense of just a physical expression, meaning like, what are these things actually at grade? What do they look like?
So.
Sorry if I missed a slide.
Okay. Um, just want to show the, okay.
Sorry to put you through the PowerPoint.
No problem.
Drama here.
It's been a little recalcitrant, so.
If it's not working, I can dig through the materials again. I was just wanting to spend a minute.
No, it's, bit too small. Oh, slide number.
And maybe just a follow-up question, because Vice Chair Knuckles showed me the evaluation. Do these go through the Public Design Commission for design review?
Yes, I believe so, but I will let DEP know to verify.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much for this. This item is certified. Let's move on to the next.
The second item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a Business Improvement District Plan in Brooklyn Community District 13. Presenting for the first time to the Commission is Sachi Cooper.
All right, Sachi, welcome. Good to have you here.
Thank you. Okay, great. My name is Sachi Cooper. I'm an associate planner on the Economic Development and Regional Planning Team here at DCP, and today I will be presenting the application by the Department of Small Business Services for the formation of the Coney Island Business Improvement District. The project is located in Coney Island in Brooklyn Community District 13. It's located on Mermaid Avenue between West 33rd Street and West 23rd Street, as well as on Mermaid and Surf Avenues between West 22nd Street and West 5th Street. The applicant team is the Department of Small Business Services on behalf of the Coney Island Bid Formation Steering Committee, and the proposed change is the establishment of a bid to provide supplemental services to the district. Some context on the area, Coney Island is a historic and vibrant community district, as well as a thriving residential community with over 50,000 residents in the area. They are primarily served by local retail and services on the Mermaid Avenue corridor, while the amusement district is located mostly along Surf Avenue and the Regalman Boardwalk. There is a large presence of both city-owned and other institutional properties in the area, including a number of NITRA properties, as well as parks and EDC-owned properties, particularly in the amusement area. And in 2009, the Commission approved a rezoning, which created the Coney Island Special District. This rezoning aimed to facilitate a year-round amusement, residential, and retail district, and led to over $750 million in public investment, including over 3,000 new homes, improvements to sewers, roads, and public space, and the bid would bid would continue to aim to have the same goals as the special district. The proposed boundaries of the bid cover three hundred and sixty-two tax lots along both Mermaid and Surf Avenues, and there are about two hundred and thirty-three operating businesses within the proposed boundaries. There are two distinct sub-areas that are delineated in the district plan, the Mermaid Area, which is denoted in green on this map, and the Amusement Area, which is denoted in pink. The purpose of these sub-areas is to define separate areas that are relevant for the property classes, although it's important to note that they are all one bid and will all be served by one district management association. The Mermaid Area runs from West Thirty-third Street to Stillwell Avenue along Mermaid Avenue, and as I mentioned, that's comprised mostly of neighborhood retail and local services, while the Amusement Area on Surf Avenue from West Twenty-second Street to West Fifth Street comprises of the main amusement district. The proposed assessment is comprised of seven different assessment classes. Assessment classes A through A point two only refer to amusement area properties. So Property Class A refers to amusement area lots with ground-floor commercial parking lots, vacant lots, and it is assessed at a rate of fifty-four cents per lot square foot plus an a thousand dollar base fee. Property Class A point one refers to amusement area mixed-use properties or properties that have upper-floor commercial uses, and it's assessed at a rate of fifty-four cents per commercial square foot plus an a thousand dollar base fee. Property Class A point two refers to commercial lots in the amusement area that are greater than ninety thousand square feet and also do not have any upper-floor commercial use. That's assessed at a rate of twenty-seven cents per lot square foot plus a four thousand dollar base fee. This only refers to two lots in the district. Property Class B is the Mermaid Area Commercial Mixed Use Vacant and Parking Lots, and they are assessed at a rate of fifty-four cents per lot square foot plus a two hundred and fifty dollar base fee. Property Class C is for residential lots assessed at one dollar. Property Class D are government and nonprofit lots that are not assessed. Property Class D point one is unique to this proposal. It is for a contributing nonprofit that has denoted in writing that they would like to pay into the assessment even though they are not required to. This only refers to one lot, and it is assessed at a rate of five cents per lot square foot plus a two hundred and fifty dollar base fee. So you can see the property classes here displayed on the map. As you can see, Property Classes A through A point two are only located in that amusement area. Property Class A point two in light blue, which is the amusement area lots over ninety thousand square feet, only refers to the two Luna Park lots in the district. Property Class B, which is the Mermaid Area Commercial Lots, are only located in the Mermaid Area. And then Property Class D point one, you can see on the bottom right, that is one of the New York Aquarium lots. The New York Aquarium is the nonprofit that has written that they would like to contribute. It is not all of their property because some of the property that the aquarium sits on is parks-owned, but the other aspect of their property they are contributing to and paying that assessment rate for. The district plan lays out a maximum assessment for the bid of one point four million dollars, and the proposed first-year budget is one million dollars. It is broken down into two hundred and forty thousand dollars for sanitation, thirty thousand dollars for public safety, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for marketing, special events, and holiday lights, ninety-two thousand dollars for beautification, horticulture, and streetscape, ten thousand dollars for other services, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for administration, and twenty-eight thousand dollars for contingency. The photos on the right are some examples of the services provided for by this proposed budget. In public review, both the Community Board and the Borough President had a favorable recommendation for this application. And that's the presentation, thank you, and I look forward to taking your questions.
All right, great job, Sachi. Let me see if there are questions for you. Look at that. All set, thank you very much, congratulations, welcome again.
Thank you.
All right, we will pick this one up for a public hearing on Wednesday. Okay, let's move on to the next.
The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning tax amendments, special permits, site selection and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District Five. Our presenter is Jessie Hirakawa.
Hello, Jessie, but wait a second.
Correction, our presenter is Director of the Brooklyn Office, Alex Omer, sorry.
I'm covering for Jessie today, so apologies. Okay, so this item is back for pre-hearing. The applicants are proposing a series of actions to facilitate a one point two million square foot development across four mixed-use buildings, including almost a thousand new apartments, of which approximately two to three hundred would be permanently income-restricted, new commercial and industrial space, and new public open spaces. The private application is presented by Broadway Junction Partners LLC with co-applicants EDC and DCAST. The project area is located in the Broadway Junction area of Brooklyn Community District Five. To facilitate the proposal, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an M one-two to a C six-four and M one-six zoning districts, a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area, and modify the large-scale general development ownership requirements, special permits to establish a large-scale general development to modify floor area distribution, height and setback regulations, rear yard requirements, and allow certain uses within the M one-six zoning district, and lastly, EDC and DCAST as co-applicants for an acquisition and site selection to facilitate the access and construction of a new publicly accessible open space in coordination with the private applicant. So now I'll go into a little bit more detail on the actions. The C six-four zoning district is proposed for approximately three and a half blocks bounded by Van Cindern Avenue, Fulton Street, and East New York Avenue, while the M one-six zoning district is located in the middle of the proposed project area, covering a portion of one block. C six-four and M one-six zoning districts are high-density districts generally mapped in central locations that are well-served by mass transit. C six-four districts allow for a variety of residential, commercial, and community facility uses up to ten to twelve FAR, and M one-six zoning districts allow industrial, manufacturing, and some commercial and community facility uses up to ten FAR while residential is not permitted. The applicant seeks to amend Appendix F to designate the C six-four portion of the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area pursuant to Option One and Two. This would require the project to include approximately two to three hundred permanently income-restricted and rent-stabilized apartments at an average of sixty to eighty percent of AMI depending on the option selected. The applicant also seeks to amend ZR seventy-four dash seven four two LSGD ownership requirements. Because you can see here, the project area is bisected by the MTA Transit Authority Elevated Rails property, this text would allow that infrastructure to be treated like a street for the purposes of LSGD contiguity. The applicant is also seeking a series of LSGD special permit waivers related to the distribution of floor area, rear yard regulations, and building heights and setback regulations. The LSGD special permit requires that the CPC find that the distribution of floor area, open space, dwelling units, and the location of buildings will result in a better site plan and better relationship among buildings, open areas, adjacent streets, and surrounding context. Additionally, for the commission's full awareness, after certification, the applicant filed an A application modifying a portion of the setback waiver requested for Building B. The applicant is proposing to slightly reduce the building setback depth along Van Cindern Avenue from ten feet to eight feet, which necessitates increasing the requested depth of the heightened setback waiver from fifty-five feet to fifty-seven feet shown in the yellow-orange color shading there. That was the only change requested as part of this A application. The applicant stated that the reason for this request was it was necessary to allow for more feasible residential floor plate depth, and you can see that would be increased from fifty-five-foot depth to a fifty-seven-foot-depth floor plate. For the fourth action, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow Use Group Six Retail and Services with a floor area greater than twenty thousand square feet within the proposed M one-six zoning district. This would allow the applicant to include large retail spaces on the first two floors of Building E. The last action requested is in coordination with co-applicants EDC and DCAST for a combination acquisition and site selection to facilitate the construction of a forty-nine-hundred-square-foot publicly accessible open space at parcel one. This action would enable a coordinated design and construction of a seamless open space on this parcel and the future city adjacent plaza to the north. Once construction of the unified plaza is complete, the private applicant would maintain the entire public open space on both parcels pursuant to a maintenance agreement with EDC. The commission should recall that recently you reviewed the larger EDC public realm improvements related to Van Cindern Avenue, which included this plaza and the related open space proposed at the entrance to Callahan Kelly Playground just to the northwest. So to the DEIS, a notice of completion for a draft environmental impact statement was issued on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and identified significant adverse impacts with respect to transportation, construction related to transportation, and air quality related to mobile sources. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and are being explored further in the final environmental impact statement, or FEIS. On to the Community Board and Borough President recommendations. So on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, Community Board Five held a public hearing, and on September fifth voted conditionally unfavorable with twenty-six against, zero in favor, and zero abstaining. In your packet and posted online, there's a more detailed memo on the board's recommendation, but I'll summarize some of the comments related directly to the actions before the commission. This included capping building heights to about twenty stories, removing the Calvary Church from the rezoning boundary, not permitting hotels and casinos, requiring uses such as institutional higher education, a trade school, a public health facility, a childcare, childcare center, and a recreational center, requiring additional off-street parking, and ensuring a contiguous open space plaza with the adjacent EDC-proposed plaza. There were additional discussions on specific unit and AMI mixes, homeownership, and additional anti-displacement opportunities. Again, that's included in your packets and online. So on August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing, and on September sixteenth submitted a waiver of recommendation. Again, in your packet and posted online, there's a more detailed memo discussing the Borough President's waiver, but in summary, the Borough President recommended that EDC manage the new open space that's to be created. The applicant include more industrial space throughout the project, and additionally echoed the Community Board's recommendations around creation of a community benefit, community benefits agreement, deeper affordability and unit diversity, less commercial uses, and neighborhood anti-displacement funding. There was also additional discussion related to investments in surrounding public transportation, formal higher education tenant agreement with CUNY, labor agreements, and HPD homeowners' and preservation programming. So with that, that's the pre-hearing presentation, I'm happy to take any questions. Great, thank you. We'll obviously pick this up on Wednesday with the applicant, but for you, we're going to start with Commissioner Goodrich.
I might have missed this in the packet, but why do, why does the community think that they're going to be hotels and casinos, that this project will bring hotels and casinos? Will it, or is there some?
There is none proposed in the application. I think it was in the hopes that, they're making a clear statement that they wouldn't like to see that. To be, to be super clear, a hotel would be required to go through another separate special permit discretionary action, and hotels aren't allowed per the citywide tax amendment. It was tied to this, so there's no, no possibility of that happening.
Okay, and in the whole, I know that we already had the different hotel, okay, you know what, I'll skip that, because I don't even think Brooklyn other than because Coney Island was part of it, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, I would love a bit more insight into why, because this seems like a very controversial project. It has had over one hundred public meetings, so there hasn't been like a lack of, you know, both sides trying to come together to iron this out, but there have been over one hundred meetings with the community, and in spite of all of that, the Community Board, or it's not even a split, they've all voted no, or conditionally no, and then the Borough President is sort of, has, has backed away. And so despite all of those meetings, I would really love your insight into why you think from what you've, you know, heard that there's still this very strong no vote against this project.
No, it's a, it's a great question, yeah, having been at a lot of these and speaking to, to folks in the neighborhood, our, our understanding of what's been going on is they're really looking for a tighter community benefits agreement and more explicit commitments from, from the applicant through this process. As I stated in the, in the presentation, there wasn't that much tied directly to the land use actions, so, you know, some of this is, is not related to the special permit aside from the height and some of the use limitations, but I, I do think they have broader concerns about not just the project, but the ripple effect that this project would have on Broadway Junction, the surrounding neighborhoods, and we're really looking for some of the concerns around anti-displacement and gentrification concerns. You're seeing that kind of described in the, in the documentation. I, I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to a lot of those discussions on Wednesday since they've been more involved on the, the day-to-day, but that's, that's my take on, on the discussion from the Community Board.
Okay, and then my, well, my last question was going to be about the AMI mix, which I think it's more like, more of, it's not even a question, it's more just a comment, which is, which I disagree with. It's too high. Okay, well, that is, is it really twenty-one thousand? Or, okay, yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much, Alex, for the presentation. I had a couple of questions, I mean, some of them, I'll just say for Wednesday because they're really for the applicant, but I would really appreciate your feedback in terms of, you know, from the department's analysis, what do you think is really possible? I mean, one question in my mind right now is really whether there could be deeper affordability, but, but from a land use point of view, rather focusing on that, you know, I, I agree with some of the comments from the Community Board and the Borough President on the kind of excess of commercial space here, given kind of like the market right now, et cetera, and but also, quite honestly, as stated by the Borough President, the opportunity to produce more housing here, or light industrial. And so I'm wondering if you can help me a little bit sort of like understand how you're thinking about it, what do you think is, is, how do you, what is your take on the land use rationale to achieve at that mix, and whether you think that there could be something possible here?
No, it's, it's a great question, and we've been talking with the applicant for quite some time about this. I, you know, when we, when we had originally looked at the, the Broadway Junction as kind of like a tertiary central business district, or it was in the EDC report a few years back as part of the Sustainable Communities in East New York Plan work, you know, the amount of transit access here and the kind of the dearth of, of retail opportunities in the immediately surrounding neighborhood, the, the applicant did make a, an argument that, that there is an opportunity here for more anchor commercial uses, trying to draw people out of the train, so that's not just a transfer point. We have seen some success of that in southern East New York, where there's that mall that's closer towards Jamaica Bay, and, you know, it's a very different kind of context, but we do see an opportunity, I think, here for trying to think about, and this is again in later phases of the development, see an opportunity for, for that kind of anchor retail opportunity. And, and so whether, whether in a post-COVID world or online shopping, the viability of that, you know, is, I kind of defer to the, to the private sector here on whether that's a viable option, and I think that's probably why they're pushing it later out, as the kind of residential population grows in the, in the surrounding neighborhood, but we do want to make sure that there is an opportunity as we plan for this tertiary CBD that, that we're not forgetting all of those important retail, whether that's dry goods or, or supermarket things that, that our community will need as it, as it grows.
Thank you, that's, that's very useful. I, I will have a question on Wednesday for the applicant about something actually I raised at certification, given that the, the light industrial is really just going to happen at the end, that's the last building. And so, so I'm wondering, I appreciate kind of like the, the idea of anchoring, creating job employment, employment opportunities, and commercial retail as sort of like the project evolves, I just, I'm one, I'm a little concerned that the working-class jobs are really just really going to happen at the end. But, but another question for you, really just kind of like in preparing for Wednesday. So- So when we, when we had the tour, again, thank you so much for that, that was really, really, really fantastic, you know, a couple of things came up. One was the open, the proposed open space is going to be fenced right now as it abuts the MTA properties, and that's kind of like yet another level of inter-agency coordination here to understand how would that first floor, how would the public realm really connect all of the buildings, and then all of these buildings with the other open spaces and the other projects? And so I'm wondering if you can share a little bit of, you know, where's the conversation with the MTA? They just, my understanding is that they just retrofitted for bus charging right there, which is great, but, but given sort of like the proposed land use changes, et cetera, I'm wondering if you can help me understand, again, what's, what are some of the constraints, and maybe what are the opportunities in, in, in sort of like adjusting, or improving really, the ground and public realm experience?
Yeah, and that's, and that's actually one of the more difficult things about this, this part of the neighborhood is the amount of infrastructure here. If you pop out at, at Broadway Junction and look to the development side, all you kind of see right now are kind of fenced-off areas and elevated structures. I think, so the, the, one of the rationales of why the open space was proposed at this location was to help with kind of that leapfrog or that visual ability to, to look out of the station and be able to see kind of a very nice, accessible open space directly across from the station, and then you'll be able to also see the, the new development and the proposed open spaces as part of that through kind of that, that visual corridor. EDC's public realm plan is looking to address all of that public space in the, in the DOT kind of public realm area on how to improve sidewalks and, and lighting, and I think they should be able to explain a little bit more on, on the, the planning work on Wednesday. But yeah, this is definitely one of the, the more difficult things to, to figure out is how do we get people to feel comfortable and move through Broadway Junction in the infrastructure, and feel like it's a place to, to not only walk through but enjoy and stay in, and that's something that, that I think the EDC and private applicant will be talking through more on Wednesday.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, and just, just to say maybe one last thing about it is that, you know, in thinking about the proposed density, it's really not the height of the buildings, what really, I think, I feel should be the priority here, but once the amount of people that is being projected arrives here, how can they move as quickly and as seamlessly as possible? And right now, there's so many boundaries, I mean, that's one, but then as you move out, you have Broadway, you have Atlantic, which are also sort of like not necessarily, you know, really penetrable right now, unless you kind of like go around and so forth. And so thinking about what's the larger, maybe kind of like comprehensive approach to really connecting the proposed density is, is I think an important priority here.
Appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I have a question about, in particular, building E or parcel five. I know it's the last parcel that would be developed, and do we have a approximate year for that?
I'll have to check the, the seeker, get back to you on that, I'm, I'm for sure.
But my main question is, if the, since most of the building will be commercial, if the commercial does not prove to be feasible, and it's similar to the building that we saw that's on Fulton, that the city agencies are going, what is the alternative scenario for that lot, for parcel five?
Yeah, and then that was actually, I think, a comment we heard as well, was, was from the Borough President about potentially allowing more residential on that site, that as of right now, there, there was no plans to, to allow for that to be residential. I think the, the, part of the, there was a balance here with the applicant in proposing an M-only district in that it doesn't allow residential. Their, part of their argument was to ensure, show that they were going to maintain some job densities, or actually increase job densities across the site, and I believe their argument-
But I think they were somewhat skeptical about that and asked for the waiver for the use group sixes in case that doesn't work out.
Right, and, and I think that's actually, one of the reasons of the waiver is to ensure that there is a kind of, outside of residential, that there was a widest variety of uses allowable, commercial, community facility, office, retail, and that was part of the rationale of, of the waiver for that site. But if they wanted to come back and do, do something that was not allowed per the M, underlying M, they would have to do, come back and do another discretionary action.
Well, I'm just curious why we didn't look at a mixed-use zone, a M slash?
Yeah, no, I, I hear you on that, and, and, you know, this goes back to our work on Broadway Junction as it related to East New York and Sustainable Communities, as well as the EDC plan, was ensuring that there was some non-residential capacity maintained in this area.
And if we did the mixed-use, we could do that.
I, I think it, this was a way to, to require it, basically, in a way that some of our, our MX tools don't, don't facilitate.
And I assume that that's not a modification we could make now, it's too late.
It, I would assume that's out of scope, given it would be a significant change in the, in the actions.
And in terms of the unit mixes, which was another thing that the, both the community and the Borough President spoke to and something, you know, I've harped on, is there anything that we can do other than having you guys write in the report that we too are interested in that, that would either encourage, require, strongly urge, a different, for them to talk to HPD about a different unit mix, because the unit mix now is really mostly, we get studios and ones, and if that's the only population we really want to house, then I think we're in trouble.
No, I understood completely, and, and you've been very consistent on this. I think, I think the, the actions before the commission cannot control that, and, and so yes, that would be in a CPC report discussion, but they are, as you stated, they are requesting funding and financing from HPD, and so as part of that, there would have to be a negotiation on, on whatever financing structure there would be, and so I, I'm going to defer to them and where they are in that discussion and, and what financing programs that they're looking into, which would-
And that would not, if they changed the unit mix from what we see, that would not require a new ULEP or an additional environmental review?
Not to my knowledge, yeah, they're, they're, no, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Abashad?
Just one question, I have questions for the applicant team, I'll save that for Wednesday, but with regards to building B, the change in the setback that went from ten to eight, was there a back and forth with the department with that? Did they go, did they say they wanted five and the department pushed back? I just wanted to know how you got to eight, that's what I'm trying to understand.
No, no, very good question, and, and yeah, this goes back to double-loaded corridor efficiencies, right? And because of the, the depth of the, of the lot backing up against the elevated rail, you don't have that much wiggle room, and they were really trying to create space between the residential floor plates and the elevated train, and comply as close as possible with the, with the setback regulations. My understanding, and I again defer to, to them on, on Wednesday, is as part of the discussions with HPD in trying to understand the feasibility of those floor plates, I think they, they were trying to get as close to that double-loaded corridor standardization of like sixty-ish feet, which we, we use, I think that was the, the interaction there. So that was not, you know, we, from the department's perspective, we do want to ensure the feasibility, but at, at a certain level, it's a little illustrative, so as they're like fleshing out the, the floor plans, the architecture and engineering, this is when they kind of hit the, hit the rubber, rubber hits the road, so to speak.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for filling in, Alex, we will pick this one up for public hearing on Wednesday.
Look out, Jesse, you did a good job.
Yeah, we will report back to Jesse, for sure. Okay, Sarah, let's move on to the next item, item four.
Okay, the fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in Queens Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Abraham Abreu.
Commissioner Surlo is recused, welcome.
Thank you. So yes, this is the pre-hearing review for New York City Transit Tuskegee Airmen Way City Map Change in Jamaica, Queens Community District Twelve. So this is an application by New York City Transit for an amendment to the city map that would eliminate this continuing close a portion of Tuskegee Airmen Way and an adjacent traffic island near the intersection of Liberty Boulevard and, or Liberty Avenue, excuse me, and Merrick Boulevard. This action would support the development of a reconstructed Jamaica Bus Depot, helping to provide improved bus circulation and support parking. This application was certified by the department on June second, twenty twenty-five. So here's just a quick aerial of the surrounding area, you can see the area that's proposed to be demapped, highlighted in orange, and that building to the south is the existing bus depot. This is the illustrative site plan of the, of the facility with north being kind of to the, towards the top left of the slide here, you can see, again, highlighted in orange, the area proposed to be demapped and how that would be in service of allowing the buses to move from outdoor parking lot into the interior of the facility for maintenance and such. It would also provide a direct exit from the parking lot to Tuskegee Airmen Way, which is the green arrow. So again, it's a, you know, a city map amendment to eliminate its continuing close a portion of Tuskegee Airmen Way and the traffic island for supporting this bus facility. Going into a public review that's happened so far, on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Queens Community Board Twelve voted favorable with twenty-six in favor and one against. And then on September eighteenth, the Queens Borough President held a public hearing, excuse me, held a public hearing on this project, and on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, they issued a conditional, conditional favorable recommendation. And that's the pre-hearing review, happy to take any questions?
Great, thank you. Let me see if there are any, we will otherwise pick this one up on Wednesday with the applicant. Okay, great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item.
Okay, the sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a UDAP designation in Queens Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Alaka Ette.
Hello. Good afternoon, yeah. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, seeking a, an urban development area, action area designation and project approval for block one oh one forty-one, lot eighty-seven, in Queens Community District Twelve and City Council District Twenty-eight. The UDAP action would allow the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to complete the disposition of the project area to Prey's Tabernacle Church to facilitate a refinancing, investment, and conservation of the existing community facility. The UDAP area is outlined in red, which is being restored to the church by the proposed action, and the blue outline denotes the lots that the church was built across in nineteen forty. The rest of the lots which received disposition approval in the late eighties, along with lot eighty-seven, were developed with housing in the early nineties. Neither the Community Board Twelve nor the Borough President had any recommendations, and the proposed UDAP action would allow the church to, the proposed UDAP action would allow the church to continue using the area as a facility space and apply for loans to refinance their mortgage. Thank you, happy to take any questions. Okay, we'll be ready for Wednesday, thank you. Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda is a follow-up discussion on a general project plan, GPP, in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Joe Giambri.
Hi. Good afternoon. At today's post-hearing, I'll share some more specificity about the general project plan for the Creedmore Mixed Use Project. As a reminder, the Creedmore GPP was presented to the commission on September fifteenth review session. This Empire State Development-led project consists of an approximately fifty-nine-acre redevelopment of the Creedmore Campus located in Belrose, Queens. The Creedmore GPP was adopted by the ESD Board last December, and now ESD is requesting a letter from the commission ahead of their next board meeting scheduled for later this month in order to approve the modified GPP. A draft letter was submitted as part of the review session package. At a high-level overview of the project, it consists of approximately two-point-one-million gross square feet of mixed-use development, and will include two thousand twenty-two homes with both affordable and rental units, and a mix of affordable and market-rate homeownership units. The project also includes ten-point-three acres of open space, as well as neighborhood retail, community facilities, education uses, and parking. Construction of the project will be undertaken in six sequential phases starting in twenty So following up on some of the questions and topics from the last review session, on the topic of sustainability and resiliency, within each phase of the project's request for proposal, ESD will include language to encourage high levels of sustainability practices, including onsite renewable energy. Respondents will score higher based on the degree in which they incorporate sustainability in this process. In terms of building design, the project design guidelines require all buildings to obtain Enterprise Green Community Certification or meet a higher building standards such as passive housing for residential building performance. In addition, all buildings financed through New York State Homes and Community Renewal will require to follow HCR sustainability guidelines and are required to meet green building standards such as LEED Residential Silver. Both of these standards don't exceed DOB's minimum building sustainability requirements, and in addition to strengthen the project's resiliency against stormwater, the design guidelines require ten percent of the total planted area to be bioswells or rain gardens, as well as site-wide, site-wide compliance with DEP's Unified Stormwater Rules. Ensuring easy and open access to the Creedmore Campus is a major goal that emerged out of engagement with local stakeholders. The project is a prime opportunity to connect the campus to the adjacent neighborhood and provide both existing and future residents with well-designed gathering spaces that are truly accessible. To do this, existing fences and gates that currently surround the site will be removed, allowing the eastern edge of the project to have a pedestrian connection where one doesn't exist today. Six new roadway intersections will be created, and two will be improved. ESD will be working closely with DOT to ensure that these access points are welcoming, safe, and fully accessible to pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. In addition, opportunities will be explored to create multimodal access along the northern portion of the project site's Union Turnpike to connect to existing bus stops and parks. ESD is also working closely with various agencies to explore opportunities for integration within the project site, as well as improvements to surrounding areas. As mentioned before, continuing to work closely with DOT to ensure new intersections are designed and implemented in a safe way is a major priority. In addition, ESD will continue to explore opportunities for transit in the project along with MTA, such as an interior bus stop or shuttle to provide more direct transit options. And building off coordination with DEP during the EIS process, they will continue to work with them as the water, sewer, and stormwater elements are constructed with the roadway This agency collaboration will continue throughout the six development phases and in a joint effort with the development teams as they are selected to implement the project. Quick update on phasing and sequencing, ESD has shared an updated phasing schedule given the removal of Phase F. The six phases are expected to be built sequentially in the periods outlined in this table without any overlap, and Phase G will only include the reconstruction of the existing streets. On the topic of potential plan modifications in the future, if there are future changes to be made to the modified GPP that would require an additional zoning override, ESD will return to the commission for input on that override. If other changes occur, ESD would require vetting to determine if the specific changes warrant a modification to the modified GPP. So C Planning will coordinate with ESD should a potential change warrant the commission to have an opportunity to weigh in on that change. And next steps, ESD would like the final letter ahead of their board meeting scheduled for later this month in order to approve the modified GPP. Thank you, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, let me see if there are questions for you, Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for incorporating that paragraph on sustainability, I really appreciate that. I, I just wanted to highlight a question that Commissioner Gold had asked last time, which I thought was really good. As you pointed out, with the exception of kind of like the infrastructure improvements for-
I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Let me see if there are questions for you, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for incorporating that paragraph on sustainability. I really appreciate that. I, I just wanted to highlight a question that Commissioner Gold had asked last time, which I thought was really good. As you pointed out, with the exception of kind of like the infrastructure improvements for the street grid, it's really clear when this construction starts, but it's not really clear when it's actually going to end. And so I'm wondering if we can also include a line in there suggesting more clarity, just to have kind of like a grounded expectation on how long this is going to take, depending on, you know, what aspect do you analyze, this could take very different timeframes. And, you know, I'll leave it there, but I just thought that that was a really good question that Commissioner Gold raised at the last meeting.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks for that input. We'll be sure to add us to the letter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I am going to now seek assent by a show of hands to send a letter to the Empire State Development Corporation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pos nay? Okay. Thank you. All ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Let's move on to the next item. Madam Secretary.
Future votes for October 8th, 2025, for consideration is 242 Siegel Street bulk authorization. There was a follow-up letter in your weekend materials, and Emily Bachman is here to present.
Hello, Emily.
Hi, Turk Rodney. Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
This is pre-vote review for 242 Siegel Street bulk authorization, a private application in the East Williamsburg neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 1, that was referred to Community Board 1 on August 13th. Post-referral review took place on September 15th, and the applicant has provided written responses to the commission's questions regarding operations of the proposed development, previous uses of the development site, and green building features. The vote is scheduled for this Wednesday, October 8th. The department supports this application from 215 NYM Moore LLC for zoning authorization to facilitate a new six-story, 215,000-square-foot film production studio, including six sound stages and associated support spaces aimed at filling the demand for a state-of-the-art purpose-built, for state-of-the-art purpose-built production facilities in New York City while providing between 900 and 12, 9,000 and 12, 2, 12, 1,200 jobs, 1,200, in East Williamsburg, Brooklyn, Community District 1. The proposed project is consistent with the goals outlined in numerous city policy initiatives, including the mayor's Renew, Rebuild, Reinvent Blueprint for Economic Recovery from 2022 and the department's North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Plan from 2018, which encouraged growth of creative and tech-driven jobs in office-based and industrial sectors in this project area. This is also the first application for a new zoning tool that was created as part of City of Yes for Economic Opportunity last year. In creating this bulk authorization tool, the department sought to simplify pathways for businesses like the production facility proposed to achieve the building envelopes they need to grow and thrive in New York. The authorization would not change permitted uses, floor area, or parking regulations of the underlying zoning districts, but would allow the proposed development to comply with the more loft-like bulk regulations of C7 districts, achieving a built form that's consistent with much of the historic building stock in the neighborhood, while facilitating a use that's compatible with a mixed-use character and future growth of the surrounding area. These bulk modifications would improve the quality and operational efficiency of the proposed development by enabling interior corridors, onsite support spaces, and sound stages with industry-standard dimensions to fit within the building envelope, while urban design controls would ensure adequate facade articulation to break up long-street walls and create a dynamic pedestrian experience. That's all I have for you today. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much for the follow-up, Emily.
SASSH prepared reports for St. Raymond Avenue demapping, MTA 125th and Lexington rezoning, 1551 Broadway signage, the five landmark designations, Barbie Building, Left Court Closing Center, 29th Street Towers, Fashion Tower, and Fur Craft Building. Also on 699 703 Lexington Avenue rezoning, and on 1720 Atlantic Avenue rezoning, which Hanif Yasi is on Zoom to present.
Good afternoon. Can folks hear me?
Good afternoon. We can.
All right. Thank you so much. This application was certified on May 5th. The public hearing was held on September 3rd, and the CPC vote is scheduled for October 8th. The department supports this application, which would facilitate the development of a new 13-story mixed-use building with 300 dwelling units, of which approximately 75 would be required to be permanently income-restricted at 1720 Atlantic Avenue. The department notes that the applicant is proposing 84 income-restricted units. The department believes that the proposed C44D, R7A, and R7A-C24 districts are appropriate at this location. The zoning map amendment allows for much-needed housing in an area close to transit jobs, open space, and community facilities. The district will allow for the construction of housing while maintaining an important allowance for commercial uses, creating a mixed-use area along Atlantic Avenue, a 120-foot-wide corridor. Additionally, the district allows for a widening of the existing sidewalk along Atlantic Avenue, improving the pedestrian realm and allowing flexibility in amassing to set back from the street, creating distance between the proposed development and the nearby elevated Long Island Railroad. Further, the zoning text amendment to MAPMIH ensures that future developments in the area will include the necessary provision for income-restricted housing. Thank you, and I'm happy to take your questions, our questions.
Thank you, Hanif. I think we're all set. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Wait, wait. I spoke too fast. Come back. Commissioner Mann.
Sorry. Just a follow-up on a question I think I raised earlier in the process. Has the department started studying Atlantic Avenue for this stretch for a potential rezoning? Because it seems like it's a bit of an outlier in terms of what's happening in East New York and what's obviously happened with the Atlantic Avenue mixed-use plan. Just curious if the department started that work.
To the best of my knowledge, the department has not begun a formal study of this area for a larger scale kind of action, but I can defer to my colleagues to speak to that if they're, if they are available.
That's correct.
Yes, I just would just encourage, I mean, you know, it's again, this is an opportunity, it seems to me, to, to create some coherence along the full dimension of Atlantic Avenue, where we're having a lot of housing growth just to the west here and also to the east. And it has the same characteristics as, you know, the, the East New York section of Atlantic Avenue, as well as the AMUP section. I would just encourage the department to start that work, because I know these studies take quite a bit of time. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you, Hanif. Okay, great. Let's move on to the next.
Okay. Lastly, SASSH prepared reports for Brooklyn CD5 and Queen CD3 walk-to-park site selections and acquisitions. There were public comments and testimonies in your weekend materials, and Joy Kim is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Returning for a vote on October 8th, are two applications by the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services for acquisition and site selection of multiple privately-owned sites for potential future park developments in Brooklyn Community District 5 and Queens Community District 3 in order to close the walk-to-a-park gap in these districts. In response to Commissioner concerns, the department sent additional materials to the commission, including potential modifications to these applications, which I will now summarize. First, parks could prioritize pursuing the acquisition of primary sites before proceeding to any secondary sites. Such a process would require that the Parks Commissioner certify in writing to the CPC that it has taken the following steps with respect to all primary sites. After ULP approval, parks reached out again to part, to primary site owners to ask if they are interested in a sale to the city. For no responses, parks sent an additional letter to primary site owners within six months of ULP approval. Parks asked the DCP Borough Office and Community Board District Manager for insight on such sites, where there was no response. Parks checked whether primary sites continue to meet ULP criteria or conditions have changed, and a walk-to-a-park gap will remain absent pursuit of secondary sites. Second, to address concerns about secondary sites that are improved with existing uses, the department proposes that the commission consider an additional criterion, that is, any building on such sites must not have been constructed in the past 15 years. This would limit the acquisition approval to sites that have not recently been developed and are likely to be sold and redeveloped in the next decade. This modification would remove two secondary sites from the Brooklyn CD5 application, secondary sites 2 and 8, and one from the Queens CD3 application, secondary site 10. The department supports these applications, which would help the city more effectively compete in the private real estate market to negotiate purchase of potential future park sites when they become available for sale. The proposed BASH acquisition approach balances procedural safeguards with increased flexibility for the city to more successfully acquire park sites that these underserved communities sorely need. We also highlight Parks' prior statements throughout public review that they intend to use this acquisition approach, this BASH acquisition approach, to more effectively negotiate with willing sellers and not to use eminent domain, and de-casse's testimony that in their experience, ULP acquisition approval has a de minimis effect on a property's value. We also followed up with the city law department, which handles these transactions, and they confirmed that ULP acquisition approval also does not affect a property's title. For these reasons, the department recommends approval of the two walk-to-a-park applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy, and thank you for your follow-up and all your work on, on this and, and the department's responsiveness to commission's questions and concerns. Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, I thank you for the work and for the modifications that you're recommending. But in my mind, for, this is the first one of what Park says will be a series. And so I'd like to be on notice today and Wednesday that I am not happy with the analysis and need for the open space. I've said repeatedly during this that I don't understand why in one- and two-family districts that have private open space, we don't consider the open space at all. And similarly, in developments such as Stite Town or Starrett City that have open space, why we don't consider that open space in the analysis, or why Parks doesn't consider it in the analysis of the open space available. I think that that's ridiculous, to say that Starrett City doesn't have enough open space because it's not completely public. So in future applications, I would like them to figure out a way that they can share with us, that they would consider how to treat private open space or how to treat publicly-accessible open space, not just POPs, but others like Nitro Developments. I mean, one of the proposals here is next to a Nitro Development that has a lot of open space and trees and other things, so I think we're doing a disservice there. Secondly, I think, I understand that Parks is concerned about open space in parks, but as the commission, we need to be concerned about more. One of the secondary sites here is a supermarket, a food bazaar, and it is the only supermarket for quite a distance. So I don't, I think that we have to know more and that sites like that maybe shouldn't be on the list, that the priorities for parks, I understand are parks, but that the commission's and the city's priorities need to be such that that open space is balanced against what is currently being offered to the community there and whether there is alternate access to the community for such a thing like a supermarket. Lastly, Commissioner Osorio had asked three weeks ago about how, a similar question, how we balance housing versus this open space proposal, because one of the sites is 90,000 square feet, and while it is an R32, that would provide a big lot for housing, and I think we need to, as with supermarkets and other uses, we need to consider all of the city's priorities when we're looking at these kinds of large template sites or sites where the zoning is of a certain capacity. There are several here where the zoning is R7, which could produce a small but significant amount of housing, and I think we need to look at that kind of alternative analysis as to whether this is the best use for such a site, if the city is going to acquire it. But as I said, I do really appreciate the modifications that you've proposed, the 2015 proposal, that anything that was built after 2015.
2010.
2010, 15, yeah, 15 years.
Right, yeah, 15 years, yeah, yeah.
And in the report, the more we can emphasize that they have basically said they would not use condemnation, I think that that's really important for my vote at least, that we're not going to condemn these sites, particularly that have active businesses on them, even if we don't think those businesses are the highest and best use. For instance, I guess the department and Parks may not think that Wendy's or Dunkin' Donuts or something like that is the highest and best use, but somebody has invested in it there who may not be the owner of the site. And I think that we need to look at that. But thank you for the work that you've done, for listening to me whine and complain, but I do appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I, I associate myself with some of the comments that Commissioner Benjamin just made, but also wanted to specifically emphasize how, I think this is important, and I think this is in a way kind of like necessary to anticipate the need for open space and to grow open space, given kind of like the long-term plans to increase housing everywhere. Having said that, I, I would encourage you to consider maybe a line in the report as a first step, but also a more intentional planning framework to try to, one, program the sites. I understand you, you've been super clear, so was the Department of Parks and Recreation in terms of explaining to us why we can't see a strong commitment right now, given that this is just the first step in terms of their own process, but, but I think we have to be intentional. Number one, in prioritizing the creation of open space in places where we are increasing density and where we need more, or as Commissioner Benjamin was saying, in places that are lacking open space, or there's at least, at least there needs to be an analysis of that. The other thing that I was, I also want to specifically highlight is that in some of these places, communities have been planning for open space for decades too. And so in creating or in acknowledging that, we could also be intentional in addressing or implementing community's visions. 197A plans, I mentioned, Boa redevelopment plans when we first looked at this. But just in general, I feel that this is sadly lacking a little bit of, of detail in terms of, you know, what are we talking about? So that's in terms of open space to support other types of development, but even in terms of the type of open spaces that we're planning, it would be great to know, why are we prioritizing a particular lot, maybe because it's, it could be a great playground, maybe because it could be more of a passive open space, but what type of kind of open space, or maybe like a recreational, active recreation space, like a court or sorts? Right now, if we don't do that, we may be sort of like missing the point. Again, these are just some thoughts as we think about how this becomes a precedent on how we do this in other parts of the city.
Yeah, on that, I, I also just want to know, it sort of ties in with both of your comments about community feedback and planning design, because, you know, with any park, even if it's just one, even if parks were coming here for acquisition approval for one site where they know for sure that they, you know, want to develop a park there and, you know, there was, they weren't considering anything else, they, their process would be that they consult with the community to come up with a design and, and ask specific needs about like what kind of space that they want, and so that's why, you know, that's why that they've come up with these design options, so that they can leave open that conversation to happen at the time of acquisition with the, with the community about like what types of recreation spaces they specifically want. But in terms of adding more detail, I mean, I also want to, you know, highlight the additional analysis that Parks provided about the secondary sites and the land use rationale that was sent to the commission last week, and, you know, we could sent to the commission last week, and, you know, we could add some more of that detail into the C P C report if that would address some of your concerns.
I think, I think that would be great. Yeah, thank you. I mean, just to clarify, what I'm talking about is not to incorporate more planning in, as part of the process of approving or authorizing the acquisition, is about creating a planning process behind that, so that we first identify where do we need to create more open space and what type of open space, and then we look for the best sites. That's what I mean. Right now, we're just kind of like saying, here are some sites that could be potentially available without anticipating some of the potential unintended consequences that that could happen, as has been laid out, which is, which may be necessary. It just sounds like we could be intentional about what type of open space and where before this happens. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you, Joy.
Thank you. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan follow-up action, which had a public hearing at the September seventeenth public meeting. Jordan Frat is on Zoom to present.
All right.
Hi, Jordan.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Here to present the post-hearing follow-up for the Aim Up follow-up action, this is an application by the Department of City Planning that is a proposed text amendment to limit a portion of the mid-block non-residential use incentive in M one-two A R six A districts, reserving, it's currently a one-point-one F A R bonus. This action would reserve zero-point-six F A R of that for all non-residential uses and zero-point-five F A R for a select set of light industrial, community facility, arts-based, and repair uses that are outlined in the zoning resolution. This was referred out by the C P C on June thirtieth. The public hearing was held on September seventeenth, and the vote is scheduled for October twenty-second, 2025. D C P recommends approval of this application. It fulfills a commitment made to the City Council and Community Board Eight during the U L R process for the general Aim Up plan to further restrict the allowable incentive uses. This was a condition of approval for Aim Up for the community board, and we feel that it honors the industrial history of the area and ensures the preservation of jobs for local residents without a bachelor's degree while still providing necessary flexibility to ensure that there is continued new mixed-use development in this part of central Brooklyn. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take questions.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much, Jordan, for your presentation. So this is also, I just want to highlight the importance of this conversation right now, and I commend the department for taking on this additional action at the time where everybody's also analyzing and connecting this with the industrial plan. So thank you so much for, you know, your presentation and the materials. That's extremely useful. I have just two quick questions in really just building on something that the Borough President included in their memo. So what is the department's position on removing the ten thousand square feet minimum at this point, number one? And, well, let me start there, yeah. What's your general position or the rationale so far in terms of, you know, hearing on that?
Sure. So the ten thousand square foot minimum lot size exists in large part because of the way that lots in this part of the Atlantic Avenue corridor are configured. They tend to be very small lots. These are mid-block areas, and they have a single street frontage. And so the floor, the floor and spatial requirements to accommodate multiple different uses on a small lot, each with their own entrance and egress, they present physical challenges for narrow and small lots like this. The other part of the city where an incentive like this is set up, which is Gowanus, they're much larger lots, they have multiple street frontages, and so we feel that the ten thousand square foot minimum is responsive to the actual conditions on the ground of how these lots are configured and where they tend to have street frontages.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense, but I specifically wonder, what is your response to what, to the rationale that the Borough President is putting forth? I mean, they're saying that smaller-scale spaces remain in demand, though, that real industry needs, you know, could actually benefit from these types of sites, understanding kind of like what you said in terms of what they look like. But I'm wondering if, at this point, that's an option to think about that requirement or some adjustments in that regard.
I would have to defer to counsel, but I believe that changing it at this point would be out of scope. I think, you know, that's, that's my understanding, and we've moved through the process with that assumption. Obviously, what we're proposing would not necessarily prohibit these sorts of small industrial spaces. We just think that given the, given the requirements of like multiple entrances and egresses and things like that, we think that it provides more flexibility to not require them.
Okay. So look forward to hearing more on that. The other quick question is more of maybe something that we can discuss later, but I'm really, I'm wondering if you can point out to existing data research, data or research on, on the amount of light industrial and industrial jobs that have been produced through the Gowanus model. I know that this is something that we're using more and more as the precedent, and I'm wondering if there's anything that you can point out or if you can share anything after this, to just understand a little bit what's been like the real impact of that on industrial.
Yeah, I would, I would be happy to share that information. I would be happy to share that information as a follow-up.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Sarah, is there any other items for today?
No, Chair, graphic.
Okay. Well, with that, my appreciation to all of you. We will pick this up for public hearings on Wednesday morning at ten a.m., and with that, we are adjourned.
Time is two thirty-four P M.